I just know we dropped those shirts off Sunday. If I'd known, I should have just brought your seat. I just didn't.
I brought some.
My face feels like it's sweaty.
All right. Benton County Commission is now in session. The Honorable Roseanne Moore is the chair.
Tonight, our invocation will be given by Commissioner of the Sixth District, Commissioner King.
Let us pray. O God, good Father, we come here together tonight to say thank you for the many blessings that we have, Lord, and that we pray that you will guide us in our decisions, do the right thing for the right reasons, Lord, in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Ferguson, will you lead us in the praise?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam President.
Roll call.
Chair, about a mark present on your tablet.
Eleven present and seven absent. Twelve present, six absent.
I'm mostly here.
So we do have a form present tonight. Next is the approval of the agenda. A motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Nunner. Any discussion? If not, everyone please vote.
Ms. Ferguson.
Gary Farr.
Eric.
It didn't show.
Are you not trying to vote yes or no?
Anybody wish to change your vote? Motion carries, twelve, yes.
Next on the agenda is the Commissioners' Forum. I mean, excuse me, the Citizens' Forum, and we don't have anyone that signed up. Do we have anyone present in the audience that didn't sign and wants to speak? Okay, we'll move on to the Commissioners' Forum. Okay, Commissioner Preston, you recognize?
I'm going to talk about a subject that concerns me greatly. It's not a resolution, it's not a motion, it's just a subject. I'm not trying to pick a battle with anybody. If you disagree, I'll listen to you, person might possibly change my mind. The subject's about the COVID-19. The Tennessee, the National Tennessee shows Benton County having a 36% fully vaccinated citizens in our county, of 42% with one dose. The ABC News reported, this report comes from 50 hospitals in 17 states. Of those in the hospital beds, they're made up of 94% of unvaccinated folks, people. In light of the undisputed medically proven national outbreak of COVID-19 Delta variant strain that is stalking and infecting unvaccinated people. The Delta Plus is in India right now. The Delta that's in the United States was in India back four or five months ago. We were watching it from TV, it wasn't a case here in this country. Now there's a new variant, the Delta Plus variant, a mutation. The sole reality that a sizable portion of vaccine-eligible Benton County citizens are currently unvaccinated imposes a clear and present danger to the young, the elderly, the pregnant, the unvaccinated babies, and the vaccine-inflicted children. And knowing through proven medical research that the Delta strand of COVID-19 is causing an overload to area and national hospitals throughout America. I propose, and this proposal might take some of you off, but this is up for discussion, we might not do nothing, but I want to go on record, I want Facebook and a few people in the citizen to know how I feel about this subject. I propose that us duly elected and sworn Benton County Commissioners discuss the utilization of a portion of the $3 million federal government COVID-19 relief fund received by our county to offer ever eligible unvaccinated citizens of this county a one-time sum of, and I'm going to stop here, I wrote this down, I wrote $100, but that could be $50, that could be $20, that could be a stack of groceries, that could be a cart of cigarettes, that could be a case of beer. Moving on. County, a one-time sum of $100 to become vaccinated for the good of all citizens of Benton County. The federal COVID-19 relief funding is here and is available to us at this moment to utilize in the battle against this invisible, ever-changing, and often lethal pandemic that lives among us now. Let us seek to motivate these eligible unvaccinated citizens to receive vaccination while the time to do so is available. The pandemic will not wait on us, will not wait on our response. Maybe if we do something like this, maybe we'll influence surrounding counties. That being said, I'm going to go to the floor, I'm going to sit down, if nobody wants to talk about this subject, I accept that. I go to the floor, Chairman.
Does anybody comment on that subject? Okay, Commissioner Fowler?
Yeah, you know, I seen those same numbers you did.
Yeah.
So Sergeant Valdez, buddy of mine, Tennessee Army National Guard, they were in the Health Department, you know, helping there for a month or so, so to be honest with you, last week, maybe two weeks ago, I called the Health Department, and I asked how many of our people in Benton County had been vaccinated, and they said 11,400 some people had, I talked to Dina. You know, we only got about 16,600 people here tomorrow, is that correct? So, you know, the math's off somewhere. I mean, I think Benton County is doing pretty good, we got a lot of senior citizens here, and of course, our children, you know, that's up to parents and what they feel, but we would have researched that number right there that you're saying, and touch base with our vaccinations, or kept record of, and maybe, you know, with everything going on in the world, numbers are getting off, and it's something, we ought to research that number first, just to make sure.
That is how many shots have been given. So everybody asks to give two shots, so that's the...
Right, I asked her, she said vaccinated.
Well, let me say this, let's hope that you're...
But I just want to make sure that we don't tell people these numbers, and the numbers may be off like anything else.
Chairman.
I was just going to ask a question to Commissioner Fowler, what's the name of the person at the Health Department? You got the answer?
I spoke to Dina. Was it Dina? Miss Ossoff. Yeah. Yes. Yeah, so I was wondering about those numbers, and I seen that, and I seen a lot, and I talked to Sergeant Valdez, and a lot of people coming through, and that's where I just prompted me to check into that and just pick it up. Anyways.
Any other Commissioner?
I think it'd be a good idea if we could do it. I think everybody needs to be vaccinated, is my feeling, because you could be the carrier that put someone, that actually killed somebody for a really bad sick.
But you got a lot of people out there that's had these shots already carrying it too.
That's true.
So you got, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of questions.
The statistics show that most, most, not all, but most who have been vaccinated are not dying.
Okay, let's move on. Did someone else want to say anything? I heard.
I heard on TV that 94% of the people that was hospitalized, or 94% of them that was hospitalized now with the Corona, had not been vaccinated.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, now we'll move on to number eight on the agenda. This is our attorney, Ms. Joffe, do you have anything you want to say for tonight? Okay, Ms. Laurie, do we have anything?
No, not tonight.
Okay, we don't have any invited guests or confirmation, so now, Mayor Shannon, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I do. First, Mr. Preston, I think that's an excellent idea to consider. I am going to try to invite somebody for our September meeting to give us the current state of the Benton County state, is how we are with the pandemic, to give us numbers. I read through the interim final report, the final guidelines for the, what I call COVID money, the American Rescue Plan Act money, it's over 100 and something pages, it's quite nice if you're needing some time to go to sleep, it'll put you right out. I think this is an allowable expense under there with proper wording, and so it is something that we can pursue. Starting with that then, I have asked my office to coordinate with the trustees' office to begin drawing that money down. There's some rumblings in Washington, as I saw in the update, that if we hadn't drawn our money down, Washington would perceive that we didn't need that money, so we're going to do our best to go ahead and get that, I think we're getting 3.2 million, I have yet to officially confirm that, that's what I've heard, so we're going to try to get that 3.2 million down in our banks. One of the things that makes that important for us is that the restrictions on spending the interest that that money will generate until we spend it is greatly relaxed, we can spend it on lots of different things. Again, I don't know how much interest we're going to draw, I don't know how long the money will be there, we can, we have until 2024, December of 2024, to obligate it, and then even a little bit longer for payouts for certain things that we may choose to do with it. So we have the potential of drawing down some interest that might be usable money, could be nothing money, but the fact is, we're going to get this money down here and get it in trustees' accounts. To that end, I have investigated some ways that we can use this, one of the ways that I, in addition to what you've already pledged to do at Big Sandy and Holiday with water and sewer, is to look at broadband infrastructure development, I think that is one of the pressing goals that we found coming out of COVID more than anything else in terms of viability for our citizens, and so I'm hoping that we can spend not a small amount of that money for broadband infrastructure development, to push that out, that is a very allowable expense, and something that I think we should pursue. I look forward to working with whatever set of committees, budget committee, property, whatever is necessary to facilitate that as time goes by. With that being said, I have provided to the majority of you, I think everybody, there was a brochure that you got, that was something similar to this. This is a luncheon that each and every one of you are invited to, hosted by West Tennessee Public Utility District, you see the dates and times that are there. If you're interested in attending, the only thing they ask you to do tonight is to sign a piece of paper up in the front here, there's a pen there waiting for you, so if you will sign that, if you're interested before you go. If you're not interested, there is absolutely no problem with that either, it'll be the Apex Building here in Camden, so that's something that you may want to be part of. We want to wish a happy birthday to Sheriff Kenny Christopher, and I had, I didn't realize that today was his birthday, he's celebrating, and I hope that he has a very enjoyable birthday. One of the things that he came up with a while ago is to look at providing transportation to people who might be wanting to go to work in, say, Humboldt at the Chicken Place. Tyson, there you go, I say Purdue, we don't do that. And I think that's a very honorable thing, because somebody, you know, may have a car that gets to the Walmart and Dollar General, but it doesn't have a car that gives Humboldt back. And so we're in preliminary discussions, possibilities, that one of the providers that we work with, North West Tennessee Human Resource Agency, may very well be able to help us with providing transportation to and from that place of employment, so that would be wonderful if they could do that. And so like I said, 30 days there, but I will say that if anybody's listening tonight and would be interested in being a driver for them, they are looking for a driver, you just, you don't have to have a CDL, but you do have to have a little additional endorsement on your driver's license if you would like to be a driver for that organization. If I go too fast, anybody wants me to stop and back up, please just ask. We are in negotiations now with, through the Free Star Program for a Place Maker Grant, it's an ECB grant, that's Economic Community Development Grant. It's hoping to allow us to develop a growth laboratory here where we can get an analysis of what we need in this county to move it forward industrially and commercially. This also could be a gatekeeper for us, that if we get this grant and go forward with this project and get some viable data, this could be the gateway to a federal grant in around the $3 million market, and that would be a wonderful opportunity for our county, assuming that we could meet any match requirements that might be there. To this end, we are having in September, around September the 7th, I believe, is the Industrial Board Development, and we're having a joint meeting with the Free Star Committee and the Industrial Board Committee, those meetings, of course, all of our meetings are open to the public, but I'm extending a special invitation to any Commissioners who'd like to be here for that particular meeting. We're going to be discussing about how the Free Star Committee is moving in one direction, Industrial Board is moving in another direction, but I believe, having seen both committees now, that if we put them together, we can get a synergistic effect on what we're trying to accomplish, and so this is what I hope to be the opening days of a very productive look at economic development in our county. And so again, I think that's going to be September the 7th in the evening, I'll send more out about that to each one of you, so that you'll have a better reminder of that. One of the things that we got, that we came in, we had nothing to do with it, it just happens to be good management on behalf of the State of Tennessee, if anybody would like to see this little brochure, this little card here, we got a brand new, for our forestry department here, a new 104 horsepower John Deere 650K doser and international transporter. And most of our firefighting dozers in this county are 16 years or older, and so this is the first of what hopes to be more firefighting safety equipment coming into our county. This came to us at no cost to us, and this is, if you want to read about it, I brought this for you to look at, and so we couldn't be happier that we have this coming into our county and thankful to the state for its wonderful management of its forestry resources. I've already spoken about broadband capabilities, that is something that we need to have 100 megabyte upload speeds across the county, from the northern point in Big Sandy to the lowest point in Holiday, and everywhere in between, and it's just too vital for us now to deal away with it. I read a recent study that said that it is now, for any virtue, anything you want to do, whether it's career exploration, it's job performance, it's entertainment, it's education, broadband capabilities is permeating all of those areas of our lives. Just think about now what this little device here has done for us, as we each one of us have our own cell phone, and how much information we have available to us, having it where we can stream it and communicate effectively, even in the spans of this Delta variant, and the Delta Plus variant, and the Lambda variant, and all the various things, COVID, which is here to stay, it's not going to Mars on the next shuttle, it's staying here, and so we've got to learn to deal with it and be effective in the way that we're providing for the safety of our citizens. I had a good conversation with Mr. Preston, Commissioner Preston, with some things that he had discussed, Senator Pickett, having to do with our COLASH resolution that was passed a little bit of time ago, and he brought me some disturbing news that, you know, there could be some water contamination going on here, so we are going to marshal all of our efforts to ensure the safety of our citizens in that area, to make sure that their water supply is not being contaminated. One of you, if you read the resolution, or if you ever read the legal right yourself with that resolution, it's true that they changed some of the components that were necessary to ensure the safety from when it's put in to map, and if it is indeed contaminating our water, we're going to get that cleaned up as we can, there's no excuse to have it polluting our waters. Our citizens have a hard enough time in this repressed, economically deprived county and having to deal with bad water. So I'll be working with our elected officials at the state and federal level, we've already had good conversations with Congressman Greens, Representative, we hope to have a conversation with Senator Lightman, Representative, but he had to reschedule, and I've got a conversation coming up with Representative Griffin, and I'll be forwarding information to Senator Stevens as well. So we're going to put a full court press on this to have it indeed examined by official of government agencies to determine the water contamination of any, and if there is water contamination, we're going to go out and get it on it, to make sure it's cleaned up and put in a recycler and pop it back. The other thing that is talked about is, of course, the TBA payments. Commissioner Preston and I had a good conversation, and he was telling me about, if you looked at your budget, you may have noticed that you received about $7,500, was it?
Yes, yes.
And that was based upon adhorium taxes from 1940. If you were to take $1940 and run them up to today's money, $7,500 in 1940 is worth around $140,000 to $160,000 in today's money. There's no reason why we are not being paid at a higher inflationary rate for that money than we were then, because I'm sure likely to be buying gas at $1940, wouldn't you?
No, yeah.
If you wanted to pay property taxes at $1940, wouldn't you like to be doing that too? So why are they not catching up with it? It's only fair, the jobs are gone, the land is taken, we can't use the waterway to the county, we can't use the land for development, so if we get some money in exchange for all we've given up, Benton County sacrificed quite a bit for this, so we're going to be taking that cause up and try and see what we can withhold of that. It's only fair, they make lots of money, they can give us a little bit more to help us here. Because every study you see, we're an at-risk county, on every economic indicator, we're an at-risk county. This money could help change the lives of our citizens, so let's go after it with all that we've got. I will, I'm happy to report that the loan that we have applied for, the $2 million, has been approved by the Comptroller, we have not received that money yet, but we are waiting on the Comptroller to approve our budget. I have no doubt the Comptroller will approve the budget, but we are still waiting on final confirmation from the Comptroller to approve that. You received in your packet, I'm sorry, you received from me by web email, a resolution regarding some, a joint resolution regarding city and county parks, that's something that's going to be on the horizon to look at. It may not be anything you're interested in doing, but it was something that came out of that 10-year master plan, and it's something that, since we wrote it into the 10-year master plan, we should look at it and see about its viability. It will require additional expenses, as you saw in that information that I sent to you, but it is something for us to consider, since we wrote it into that plan, and I talked with Mayor Papert, and he's understood that we weren't necessarily going to have a resolution tonight about that, but that we would be considering it at some point.
I got to the email from you, and I called Mr. Gerald Parrish, who's over at the Park Director, he was very excited with the deal of it, and he said be sure to contact him, he liked being involved, that there was free money for at least two years, to send the director to school and for money to pay for the park. So there is a lot of money, but he said he would love for you to contact him about that, and he would like to be a part of it.
If you give me his contact information, Mr. Plant, I'll be happy to do that.
I'll do it.
Good to be happy.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
For the folks here that don't know who Gerald Parrish is, he's the gentleman that helped Benton County write the grant that eventually resulted in all the ballfields we have in the county. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, in relation to this, one of the things that we have to do from time to time is make appointments, and so as I was looking things over, I'm going to bring this to your attention, make sure you do nothing with it at all, again, you may choose to do everything with it, but the Commissioner that you appointed on the electorate was Commissioner Mary Powers, and of course, she is no longer a Commissioner because she moved to the district, that gives you an opportunity to appoint somebody to replace her from your body for the remainder of her time. Now, the way I would like to do the Commissioner replacement is, is that you as the body decide who that needs to be, and then that would be the person that I recommend to take on that. So you can choose to do with that as you will, if you choose not to replace her, you can let her serve out of her time, that's perfectly fine with me, if you would like to replace her with a member of your body as a Commissioner, then that is certainly your opportunity to do so as well. That's not coming up tonight, but that would be something for you to consider for the September meeting if you wish, okay? But I didn't want to make you aware of it. Now, Mr. Plant serves as, he serves on the board, but he is not serving as a Commissioner on the board, he replaced another citizen on the board. That's everything that I have, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them, and when we get to a particular resolution, Mr. Nunner, I'll be happy to take that up at that time.
Any comments? Okay, we're going to move on then to the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. I have a motion by Commissioner Patton and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions or corrections? If not, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Twelve, yes. Motion carries.
Next is the report of the Public Utilities. I have a motion by Dana Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Hearn. Any discussion on this? If not, please vote on the Public Utilities.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Twelve, yes. Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is the beginning of our resolution, so it will be number 11 on the agenda, but it is Resolution Number One. It is the approval for Benton County Schools to join the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative. We have a motion to bring it to the floor by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Patton. Commissioner Ferguson?
It was recommended by Budget.
My friend says approval for Benton County Schools.
Well, that's what it is, isn't it?
Yes, the approval for the Benton County Schools to join the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative is what you're talking about.
Okay, is that Resolution One?
It's Resolution One.
No.
It's not.
It's not a resolution?
Resolution One is a different kind of system, this doesn't have a...
This doesn't have a resolution? Okay. My mistake, Dan, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second for the approval of the Benton County Schools to join the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative. Any questions?
Can someone, Chairman, tell me what the Sourcewell Purchasing is?
Mr. Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Florence, could I be here and ask me, should there be a question that maybe I could field? This is like so many other purchasing cooperatives, this allows us to, the school system, to purchase equipment and other things at discounted prices, and because they've already been vetted, we don't always have to go through the bid process, which speeds things along a great deal. So it's just a way of, it's like going through thegovernment.com or other things that's already been approved for this, so it's just a purchasing mechanism for cheaper discounted prices.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? If not, please go ahead and vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Mr. Miller, will you say for the record your abstain?
I was disconnected. Hang on a minute.
Would you like to change your vote, Mr.?
Yes.
To a yes or no?
To a yes.
Ms. Miller, yes. Anyone else wish to change their vote? Motion carries, twelve, yes.
Okay, now we are down to that Resolution Number One.
Thank you.
Which is to establish a committee for the resale of land bought at delinquent tax sales. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Patton to bring this to the floor. Any discussion?
On behalf of, I'll give a little explanation for this, we purchased some land through tax sales, it happened on a very regular basis, and we, the law requires that when we're getting ready to sell that land, that the county commission appoint four members from the commission to work... the commission to work with myself, or whoever the setting mayor is, to approve the amounts, the use for the initial sale price. It seemed to me that since we had a standing committee of property committees, that that would be, and that's a five-member board, that that would be the way to do this. And so I have asked that you approve the property committee to be the standing board for these types of sales from now and into the future. And as a result, we offset the price expense. So that's what we're doing. We've got a sale that's coming up on August the twenty-eighth. It's a Saturday. We're going to be having registration at eight fifteen, sale at nine. That should be in the paper, it's going to be on social media. So we have about sixty-two parcels of land that's going to be, I hope you're sold at that time. If we get the price that we've asked for, for all these parcels of land, we'll be bringing the county in approximately one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in revenue, and we'll be putting each and every one of them back on the tax roll, because with us being the owner, we have no taxes on them. So they've not been collecting taxes in all these years. So this is just a mechanism to put these back to people who might be able to develop the land, sell the land, make good property taxes and all that sort of thing coming back. So that's what I'm asking you to do, is to vote for the property committee to be that standing committee, present the law. And we had a pool, when I went to the legislative committee and the property committee, I gave them copies of the law, so they verified that what I was saying was true and accurate.
Okay, Commissioner Fur.
Was this property, new property that's being sold for delinquent taxes, or was this part of the old property that was to be sold in the past that didn't get sold or whatever?
Well, we're, the process to go from someone not paying their taxes to the county owning it is a very lengthy process. So to say this is old property, this is property that hasn't had taxes paid on it in years already, just to begin with. So what we have is, these are new parcels that were not sold. The last time this was done was in two thousand and nineteen, and these are parcels that, there were several parcels then. And this is a smaller number of parcels that are being sold, but that have come into existence since that sale. I do not believe that there's a repetition of any of these properties, but I was not looking for that. And I would suspect, Mr. Fur, that now that we've got the process down, that you're going to see this happen much more frequently.
Commissioner Platt, do you want to say something?
I'm kind of concerned should we not have a renter involved in some of that or something? I mean, myself, I'm not a renter or knowing what the property, would that be something you could put on that board? I'm just suggesting, I just--
Well, the law just says that the members of that committee come from the county legislative body. We have a team of people who are helping with that. I work very closely with, it says the mayor and that committee sets the prices. So, but I work very closely with Mr. Ryan Hall. I work very closely with how he assesses these properties. We actually, the two of us went around spending an entire day. We drove from Big Sandy to Holiday. We're always impressed with the beauty of the county. And as we were seeing all of these various parcels of land, we discussed the property values and whatnot. And I will tell you that certain larger cities, they absolutely do contract this out to renters and whatnot, allow them to do this. Given the process that we have here, we felt that in this instance, that we could do it quicker and probably a little cheaper than if we got rid of the law. That's not to say that that can't be done in the future, but that's just what we've got right now.
Okay, no one else? I'll ask for roll call, vote, please.
Anybody wish to change their vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Okay, next is number thirteen on your agenda. Resolution affording Kristen Bell Bogus to the Civil Service Board for a one-year term set to expire August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. We have a motion by Commissioner Patton and a second by Commissioner Plant. Any questions about this? We have, okay, go ahead, Mr. King.
Madam Chairman, is Kristen here?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
I was just going to recognize her--
Okay.
--when you come forth and introduce yourself, Kristen.
I'm up here. I'm Kristen Bell Bogus. I was raised in Holiday, moved to Camden later after I got married. I have two daughters and a stepson, ranging from the age of eleven up to twenty-eight. And I'm very interested in getting involved in different things in the county and stuff. I worked for the Sheriff's Department for several years, so I have an interest there. And I'd appreciate your support.
Any questions for Kristen?
For what it's worth, speaking on behalf of the Civil Service Board, the other two members, they felt very comfortable with Ms. Bogus, and would like to see you confirm her on that position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With no other discussion, please vote, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Number fourteen on your agenda is the resolution to reappoint Richard Key and Dewayne Preston to the Benton County E-91 Board for a four-year term set to expire October first, twenty twenty-five. I've been informed that the mayor has chosen to pull this resolution.
I have, I've been talking with Mr. Whipple about this. I want to make sure that we get this going exactly the way it needs to be done. And given the fact that it was the king of my attention late as to what the plan was, I felt it best to pull this and bring it back in some kind of consideration.
Okay, so, have you got that? Are you all ready? Okay. Number fifteen on your agenda is the resolution in support of the expansion, improvement, and widening of U.S. Highway Six Forty-One. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Hearn.
It was recommended by budget.
Any other questions or any other discussion on this?
Mr. Plant, would you?
Okay, since I see no other, these people wanting to talk will ask for a vote on this,
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Number sixteen, resolution budgeting funds received in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars within the library budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Plant. Commissioner Ferguson, you recognize?
It was recommended by budget.
No one else has anything to say, so we'll take a vote, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Number seventeen is the resolution budgeting funds received in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars within the sheriff's budget. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Ferguson.
Recommended by budget.
No other discussion? Roll call, please.
Chair, you're fired. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, twelve.
Okay, number eighteen on your agenda, resolution transferring funds in the amount of four hundred and eight dollars within the health department budget. Motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Ferguson.
Recommended by budget.
Okay, recommended by budget. Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Number nineteen on your agenda is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars that was received in the month of June and reverted back to the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund at a fiscal year-end budget within the sheriff's department budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Patton and a second by Commissioner Ferguson.
This is new money, and it was recommended by budget.
Okay, if not, roll call, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, twelve yes.
Number twenty on your agenda is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-five cents from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to pay the reimbursable upgrades, improvements, and security installments at the Benton County Election Commission. We have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. This will also take two-thirds of the vote.
Yes, it's new money and recommended by budget.
And also, this money would be reimbursed?
Commissioner Fowler, do you recognize?
What kind of upgrades do we do? I know it's going to be reimbursed, but what did they--
We put in, the new camera systems, we put in, the door and the front was replaced. There was some computer systems that were upgraded, just a general overall enhancement of security to provide for the safety of the data that's contained therein, and to make sure that they're compliant with Homeland Security guidelines. In fact, it will be coming by way of Homeland Security Grant forward to ensure the integrity of relations across the state.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Twelve yes, motion carries.
Next is number twenty-one, appointing of Melody. We have three, Lisa Dooley, Tina Donahoe, and Sandra D. Parker. We have a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Patton. Roll call, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Twelve yes, motion carries.
And now we are down to number twenty-two. Is any other business that we can take care of? No?
I meant to mention this earlier, and I apologize, but Commissioner Hoppe cannot be here tonight. He suffered from the effects of COVID. While he himself is improving, he reported to me that his wife was not improving as well as he would hope. So let's keep both of them and all that are impacted by COVID in our county in our prayers.
Thank you.
Do we have any business? Oh, okay. Commissioner Ferguson.
Well, September thirteenth, next month, at the insurance, we're going to start at four thirty. You want to tell about that?
I'll be happy to tell about that, but I was canceled on.
Oh, that's what I was saying.
We've done all this preliminary work to have the meeting moved and coming together so we could talk about the Tennessee risk management, and they had to cancel on us. So we're going to look to reschedule that some other time. And I just got the notification that today. So I'm glad you brought that up. You were so wonderful to remind me to say that. So while the meeting has already been announced at four thirty, and we will need to follow through with the fact that the meeting is that way, there will not be talk about risk management, that particular anything from the Tennessee people.
Okay, but you're saying that it's been advertised, so the meeting--
I believe it's already on the paper, and it's already, we've already had to put out in places, so we'll have to follow through with the meeting at four thirty for that. But it won't be very, you know, time long.
Okay. Do you have any else? I have a couple if you have any. The Oversight Committee, if anybody is--
Commissioner John, how many? Somebody I was thinking about earlier, remember, we were passing the minutes, and they may have already been done, but if I was not mistaken, through the last month and the month before, we had some minutes that had some typos or something. We never did approve those. It does come back. Commissioner Key and Council Mayor is one of them, and we set those to a later month. Did we ever come back and approve those?
Did we not approve those as being amended?
I thought we did.
Did we? Okay, I'm going to change them and then come back as we're meeting. I just want to change, when we pass those minutes, it makes me think about it.
Okay, well, thank you for reminding us in case we had-- I was going to announce that the Oversight Committee meets tomorrow night at five o'clock at the UT Ag Extension Office. If any of you commissioners want to come and sit in on that, we really appreciate you coming and seeing the work that they're trying to do for that.
It'll be held here at the courthouse?
No, it will be down the street at the old electric system building where the UT office is, Heather Smith's office.
Okay.
What time is that, Oversight?
Five. Yeah, that's tomorrow night. And then tonight, or, Mayor, are we still having a short meeting tonight after this meeting for the committee?
It turned out that the property committee would not have a forum.
Okay. So that meeting won't be tonight. Okay.
So we will not be able to do that.
That's all that I had. Does anyone else have any? Right, Commissioner Miller?
I've been sitting here percolating on what Rocky talked about earlier with the vaccination shots and so forth. And I think it's a good idea. I agree with that. But I think we need to think about how we do that. Because we've got people that stepped up and went and got shots very quickly, thinking it was the right thing to do. And then we're going to reward the ones that fought it and waited by giving them money. And I'm not sure that that's going to be taken well. Not saying I see it one way or the other, I'm just saying that's something we need to think about. We're going to have a whole forty-something percent that's already had it, that's not going to get a hundred dollars, and they're going to understand it.
I think it's probably a good thing to get anybody that will take it to get the hundred. There's a lot of people out there that are not doing it, that's not got, that would probably draw them in there by doing that. Fifty dollars for a long ways. It's a dead thing, especially if it's going to be, I call it grant money, it's not real grant, it's just money coming from the state for COVID. If we've got that kind of money, we're going to pay that out to the county. Whatever it takes to get them vaccinated, I think it's a good thing. I bet. When you say one vaccinated, that's one that you ain't got to worry about. It's ninety-something percent a cure for or not protected.
I agree, and I think probably most of us agree, but I think before that ever happens, we will join together and work this out. Like Mr. Nunry said, I think there's some work that needs to be done on it.
Well, I don't know if there's to be done there. We'll also have to make sure that it clears the hurdle for the federal obligation we'll have, because one of the things about this money is that if we spend it incorrectly, they want it back.
Right.
So if we get too far out there on the wrong side of this, we're going to have to cough it all back up. And so that's why we want to make absolutely sure that no matter what plan we're trying to do, that it meets federal muster.
President?
Chairman, the good thing is that we're having a conversation about this subject. That's really good. Let's hope that we haven't had our best idea yet. Maybe there's something better than money. Let's trust the mayor. He's looking into it, he's researching it. Maybe, maybe he'll have a better idea tomorrow. That being said, it was said in this room by Tammy Carter months ago, use the radio. We could have some prominent citizens. Maybe prominent's not the right word. Have the mayor go on the radio and ask the citizens to consider the vaccination, being encouraged on the radio, maybe the newspaper. There's a lot of things, let's just study on it and hope that we can accomplish something. That being said, Mayor Randy, thank you greatly for taking an interest in the Lake Acres resolution, the TBA dredge, bottom ash that's on sixty-one acres here in Benton County. And I appreciate that, and let me know if I can help. I yield a floor, Chairman.
Anyone else? Commissioner King.
Madam Chairman, I have, I'd like to request that we get a copy of all the committee minutes in our packet for the ones that can't make the minutes or to the meetings, and that way we just kind of got a record of what's going on. Not that there's anything other than just inform, information. And another thing is if we get papers that have nothing on it-- And another thing is if we give papers that have nothing on it other than just writing, it should have something on heading that says what it is.
That's my fault.
Okay.
My staff is so efficient that they put that in. And what we're looking at is actually the parcel, parcel numbers of all the property that is up for sale on the August 20th.
I figured that, but I wouldn't.
And it's when, they are so efficient that they put that in without me putting a heading on it.
Got it? No problem. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to say things? Does everybody agree? Do we want to just maybe take a voice vote on having our, all the committee reports put in our packet from each committee? I thought we were.
We used to have that. We were a month behind, but we used to have it.
I think they just ran it after the minute of, I think, the later, but Gail gets the, that has, that does the packets.
Okay.
And if they want to give emails, we can email them. I'll be, are they talking about the committee?
Committee meetings. Between reports.
Maybe she can email them or something.
Could you give me time to talk that over with my staff about that? Because that, they're talking about that being a lot of work and it is. And making sure that we get everything going. And maybe we can reduce that to emails, that, that's a big proportion of it. And I can take care of that for getting that out to you. Because it's going to have a lot of copy time and staff time to do this. So if you'll give me that time, we'll have a resolution. That's the wrong word. We'll, we'll have an answer or solution to this in September.
Thank you.
We used to have those in our packets in the past, I'll say that. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we need a motion. Mr. Farr?
I've always, I've always received a report, I'll get all of the standing committees. You know, the minutes kept in there, minutes. Now, some of these other little small committees, I can't remember really if I'm getting any kind of notes on them, like the meeting tomorrow night and stuff, you know. But I don't know where to get the minutes on that to be there. But, and that's a good idea, you know, to do that. Keep people that don't really know what's going on and then them all at once say, well, I didn't know that. And a lot of times they're not informed if they don't know what we're discussing. So that's a good idea.
Mr. Farr, I think that there was a copy of the minutes from the last Oversight meeting.
There were, probably a lot of the others, just not, just not in there.
All right, well, like Mayor Shannon said, that he's going to work on that for us and see what he can do. Anything else? No, we need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, very.
Motion by the guy. Commissioner Ferguson and Commissioner Herm to adjourn. All in favor, vote yes on your tablet.
Everybody say aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Did everyone notice that we just set a record tonight, getting finished before 7:00? I know.